He said to me.
What did he say?
Hey Mayor. Oh.
That's not fair.
I realize I'm impulsive and tetchy, but I...
That's her. Libby's going crazy already.
She was embarrassing. It's an underwritten text.
Oh, well, I'm glad I didn't text you.
That's some unheard voicemails I had, so... Bear with it.
That's some unheard voicemails I had, so bear with me.
Always up on the tires, you know, just go ahead and put them on each one of their spine.
Moby.
What up?
Seeing signs up, man. I just left, I just came down from like Fort Jackson Boulevard area.
I got, uh, I got them ready, I got them out, and like last weekend it was nice and cool, I said, yeah, I'm just gonna put some.
That's how I phone out there. Home out. Oh, man. Yeah.
Okay.
Have to worry about that.
Let's go around.
How are you? That's sweet, man, you're looking good, sharp guy. Man, he styling. He styling, look at his hairstyle, looking good.
Changing it up.
I like it.
Chris trainer keeps tweeting about your hair.
Does he really? It does. I don't read, I don't do all that stuff, so I miss all the good stuff.
It's either that or my suit selection sometimes.
Oh, really? Well, you're looking sharp, so.
Appreciate it. Thank, thank, thank everybody for their patience.
I'm gonna give me one, man.
Hurry up, man. Clark, can you call her on?
Here.
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 Yeah.
Here.
Happy to be here.
Mr. Mayor, what a welcome, Miss Plow in person.
Thank you, thank you, thank you.
And I would, Mayor, if you grant me some privilege at the beginning of the six o'clock meeting, just, I'd just like to say some thanks to people.
Absolutely.
Glad to hear. Mayor, if you would give me just one minute of personal privilege also, there are two ladies who I want to take the opportunity to recognize. They are near and dear to all of us and help every single one of us around this table with grace and a lot of patience on every day. But if DeeDee, Ms. Ginger Fanning, DeeDee Fanning, and Connie Lucius would stand and be. Oh, are they in the, yeah, come in here, come here, come on, Connie, back. Well, Connie, I don't know, she doesn't miss a beat, because she did just have a beautiful baby boy and has made it back and she'll have some more news for all of us, but I'll let her share that when the time comes. And then DeeDee, they both work very closely with Libby to take care of council, and they both have been working for us for 10 years.
Oh, my God.
So I want to give them their 10 year period. Thank y'all, thank you. Want it worth being recognized.
They do take care of us.
They do, they really do. I didn't know they'd been here 10 years in time flies.
That's unbelievable.
Okay, so with our first council discussion and action item, Mayor Benjamin, do you want to take these items in the order as listed?
Yeah, listen something else, uh, I'd say so, yeah.
Okay, number one is the fiscal year 2015-16 accommodations tax and hospitality tax funding recommendations. Ms. Libby Gober, Assistant to City Council, will help walk council through these recommendations.
After we get done with that, though.
Good afternoon. I don't know if you want to take these separately, Mayor and Council, and do the accommodations tax, or do both?
Stay them together.
Well, actually, it might be easier to start with community promotions, because it's smaller and not, not as many people.
Move approval? Uh, I mean, this is a, this is a recommendation, right?
The community promotions, funding recommendations, yes, sir, number two, item number two.
How do you get that?
It's the sheet that looks like this, you should have it in front of you.
Oh, accommodations.
Community promotions, this one, it's just a question.
As soon as I remember, we had 300,000, 318,000 available, did a NOFA, notes of funds available, and staff has made recommendations as the, of course, the requests, the amount exceeded $1 million. They're making recommendations on how to allocate the $318,600, which appreciate the time, energy, and effort of this process. Any discussions surrounding it? The, um, if, if not, Ms. Davis, you're moving a lot.
Um, I, okay, that's okay, I, I can discuss it later.
Okay.
Libby has, she can have, and I know what you're looking at, she has answered to your question.
She does.
Okay, so how about, just for those, those who may be interested, maybe if we get a few photocopies of this made and distributed.
I have some.
Clean versions, um, so motion, move approval, is that second?
So I'm move second.
Motion by Mr. Davis, second by Mr. Bedura, in discussion, seeing none, Mr. Brooks, question, Clark, call her off.
Hi.
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 All right. Thank you, Mr. Vine. Uh, you guys cool with ATAX and HAX together?
Yep.
All right, Libby, please.
Um, well, I wanted, first of all, to tell you that House Stevenson is here, Chairman of the Accommodations Tax Committee if needed, and several members from the Hospitality Committee are here, if you would stand, please, and just be recognized. These are the people who work so diligently on, um, putting all this together. But I, I would ask too, Mayor and Council, if you would, as you know, we have a lot of fiscal agency in this list. If you would, in your funding, whatever your funding recommendations are, if you would fund the events and not necessarily the entity. For example, we know that the Humanities Council is not going to do the book festival anymore, and they're on here, because the application was, they, they were intact with doing it. And I think One Columbia is now going to take it over, so the, the fiscal agency will change, so if you would consider just the events and not.
We must have the book festival.
Absolutely, absolutely, I'm an advocate for that, we have to have the book festival.
So this year, you can give the money to the opera instead of the book festival.
Okay, Mr. Ligon, you have not been recognized by the mayor, so. But that is a thought, yes, okay. But, so I would ask you to consider that, if you would consider the entity and not, I mean, the activity or the event and not the entity funded. That would help, that would be helpful in saving us having to bring things back to you when the fiscal agency changes. And I'm happy to answer any other questions that I possibly can.
Well, I, I was just gonna say, I, I know one big ticket item that's not reflected on here that we've all talked about before are the yellow shirts for city center partnership and the Vista Gill. I think we can, we can discuss that outside of this allocation, but I just wanted to put that on there that I know we, we need to address that issue, but I don't think that we can address it because of such a big ticket item within this current approval, approving the spreadsheet.
Okay, well, let's, okay, let's.
Then we'll have a subsequent motion on that.
The ask from the Vista Gill, I do believe, is 225, and the additional needed by CCP is 75.
All right, so where, where are we in terms of fund balance or relevant dollars, or what, what, what addition is available for allocation? That's a question for you, Ms. Kaufman.
Yes, it is, it is, and I'm not sure, I think the, what we carried forward, and there may be some discussion about that at some point. What we carried forward is intact, and then what we rolled over that people lost because they didn't request the funding is going to be, I think, about 20 or 25,000, is that correct, Missy? Okay.
What's the total, I was sharing with this, with Libby in, in the hallway, like, what we would, we would think of as our savings. And I know you, you do fund balance, and fund balance is used for the budget, all that stuff, but kind of making it the simplest terms, what is available, unallocated, available today?
Based on unaudited numbers, as of June 30th, and taking into account what's already been allocated from fund balance for this current 15-16, is 600,000.
Available.
Available.
Did it spur?
But. Well, actually. But if you, if you approve these spreadsheets as presented to you, that ties up over 300,000, right? So it's less, it's about 200,000 then.
That's what I, that's what I want.
Is that correct?
Y'all could figure that out, I need to know that figure.
That's right, and there is additional allocations on your spreadsheet that are not reflected from the, the committee amounts, and yes.
So if you approve the spreadsheets as reflected here today, then the figure would be less than 200.
Right, the amount based on anticipated allocations to be made, the available balance is 25,000.
They don't, they don't, based off keeping everyone whole with, at the level that was originally approved last year. They, what would be the?
Well, this is one, this is one comment I did want to make before council votes on this too, because I want everyone to hear this in this room, that everyone has heard me talk about, let's keep apples to apples here. The allocations being made here, recommended by the committee, and some things that have been done by council at this time last year, you have to look at where you were at this time last year. Council was very generous last year and allocated lots of funds throughout the year to these organizations. They even allocated more money to the committee to disperse, so at the end of the year, you cannot look at what you had at the end of the year last year and look at this, because you'll be devastated, because it's probably going to be a cut. You've got to keep apples to apples, at this time last year, where were you? And then as we move forward throughout the year, whatever's the pleasure of council, we will certainly work within those parameters.
Which, which the, what's the, the Parks and Rec Foundation, what events, which events do they support?
What was that?
Parks and Rec Foundation.
The activities that they do in our parks, this, all the summer concert series, Kids' Day, WOW.
I thought so.
Parades, Veterans Day Parade.
Concert series is Parks and Rec Foundation?
Yes.
That was excellent this year, by the way, excellent.
Well, Mr. Baker, it was excellent.
Baker was excellent this year.
And MLK Parade. They do very well with that 75,000, Mr. Mayor.
I see the, um, the high school basketball, football were cut, or one was not funded and one was cut this year, championship.
That, that one expired, their commitment expired.
That was funded by council in years past, that was a commitment, a three-year commitment that you all had made to the High School League.
Okay, so the commitment expired, but the request didn't expire, so it was, it was a request, it was requested again to extend the commitment.
What's, what's the name of it?
Number 75, 76. Yeah. The 35,000 for the basketball.
Yes, yes, yes.
And football, looks like we didn't do anything last year, which surprised me. Another two separate requests from the state museum, I believe, one from the foundation, one from the, uh, from the museum itself.
Yes, sir, what you see on here is from the museum itself for marketing, the foundation was separate to council's consideration. Now, that, that number is not factored into any of this.
Okay, we, we with that one, so the, the foundation request is also for marketing, or is that, what's that one for you?
The foundation request, I do believe, is for marketing, the new, the new everything that they have there, but that's separate from this, from the state museum, a request for marketing, just the state museum in general.
Okay. Now, I asked you previously about the, I know previously we, we made a multi-year commitment to work with the Renaissance Foundation on, um, on their project, that we, we haven't, we haven't moved forward with that just yet, I guess, when, when and if they, they're prepared to move forward, we can revisit that, all right, but I know we set aside, y'all, just to refresh your memories, we set aside 75,000 a year that we use in partnership with Richland County to, um, uh, fund debt service if they secure the private loans. And that, they haven't moved forward with it yet, I think, so that 75 is still place held here, and what about the 75 for last year? Is that, is that?
That went back into fund, fund balance, is my understanding, yes, sir.
All right.
Mayor.
Mr. Bedura.
Since we're talking about, um, expect, expect the groups or about not being funded, the, uh, the opera received 4,000 of recommended funding from the, from the committee, where the last year they received over 22,500. 4,000 might as well just close the doors for.
What line item?
The opera.
What, what's that?
What number is that?
They, they.
What number?
Close the number.
Oh, I'm sorry, um.
64. But if you look at what they received last year at this time, Mr. Bedura, it was 6,000.
I understand, but 4,000 to put anything at all, what, any festival, you know, I mean, might as well just tell them, hey, close the doors and not, not be represented. And, and I think that, you know, with our size city and being a metropolitan, and opera is part of, part of the art culture. So if there, if there is any money anywhere that we can allocate some of that, I would appreciate some more funding for that.
Is that Temple Liggins' crap? I'm sorry. I'm being quiet. Just do what you're supposed to do. Ms. Howden.
And then there's a couple more people that reached out to me that I can, you know, I can live for the, if there is any more funding in the future. The classical ballet has asked me for more funding, but I think we can wait, but I just thought that the opera is an important part of the city that we need to make sure that gets funded.
So, again, clarification on available access, we got to get arms around that, and obviously it could be a sep, a separate vote as, as Councilwoman Devine suggested, we can take these up in total, and then amended, amendments we can make. For, but I have, I have not several, but a few recommendations, and Mr. Davis has some as well, Oakley Community Council, North Comma Business Association. We got to go ahead and make sure we fund the yellow shirts for CCP and for the Vista Gill. We need to continue conversations, Richard, about future, how we're going, how we're going to do this in the future, I know, I know, and some of your members very much don't like the idea of a bid, but I think it needs to be central to the discussion, so we, we have to chat about that, how, how we do it prospectively, but we have to do it this year. Conversations surrounding the Black Expo, is this the 20th year of Tameka, or is it 19, it's coming close.
Yeah, I know 20 is close, and I, I would need to confirm, this might be the 19th year, but again, I'm looking at the committee, you know, and I, I want to reiterate what Libby said, apples to apples, they, the committee is recommending what they received last year. However, over, if you look at what they did actually put on the event, which is in March or April, it's significantly less, so they do need to be looked at in order to be able to put on the event next year. And then what I would like to do is for our, our staff to work with them on the planning for the 20th year, because I do think that's going to be significant.
Okay, the, um, the other, and the only, the other note I had myself was the S I A C. Um, at least.
What number is that?
I'm sorry, ma'am, that's number eight. The request is significant, we funded it in addition to the committee recommendation last year, but they have been cut, cut what they, what the committee recommended last year, they cut that by 5,000.
That's another one that was funded by council very heavily last year too, throughout the year.
But even the recommendation from the committee is lower than the one last year.
I did have a question. This is one I, I meant to point out or ask Libby about when I asked her questions earlier, POSCon. I, I guess last year we, we were the, the council allocation was the only allocation.
What number is that, Mr. Devine?
It's 81.
It's 81, and I'm just wondering, is, is that in something else, like economic development or not, or this is, if this got approved, they don't get any money from this city?
Well, it is a conference, John, would you like to speak to that about POSCon?
I did address it, and as the committee elected not to fund conferences, but did recommend that this would be considered as part of economic development.
Also, they're doing it in conjunction with IndyGrits this year.
Okay, I was just wondering.
Yeah, no.
And is it in that budget?
No, it's not, we got, we got, we got to figure out how to do POSCon, I mean, last year, the coordination between, um, year, the coordination between POSCon, ConvergSE, and Indy Grids was fantastic. I mean, it was, it was, it was a big one for the community. Mr. Mayor. Yes, sir, Mr. Davis.
I would like for us to start to really do some serious discussions with Auntie Karen's Foundation. As you all know, they're also in the midst now of some capital projects that will bring, and the arts village concept to, to the North Columbia area. And as I historically look at their numbers, they've been relatively low.
But they got what they requested.
I, I understand, but only because there are reasons they.
Yeah, but I mean, I think that's a different application and a different process, but I think.
I'm just saying, where they're headed now, we need to have some serious conversations with them to help them reach their goal.
So just clarifying, yeah, on this, on this spreadsheet, I guess every, everybody is okay with everything on here, with, I guess, the amendment on this spreadsheet would be the removal of the 75 for Renaissance?
I'm, I'm sorry.
I'm just wondering.
Remove it. I thought she said that she took their previous commitment.
That rolled over. I think what the mayor, I'm just asking a question. I think what the mayor is suggesting, this was a commitment, if they got funding, if they, if they were able to issue a bond, that at this point, where they are, they're not going to be.
Not prepared yet, not, not prepared yet, but I think prospectively.
Right, in the future, but so you're saying the whole, holding it, the 75, holding it this year.
Release it, yeah.
Yeah, we need to release it. So that's why I was just getting clarity. Other than that, it sounds like everything on here, although some of us may have some groups that we think need a bump up, other than that, everything else on here is okay.
We can do that, and the bump ups will come back.
We'd have to find money for that. I think that would be a separate.
We need some clarity as exactly what the amount of availability is. What is?
I was trying to get to. So if we add that 75 to what you said is 25, so we have 100?
I'm sorry?
They're thinking we have 100. If we take, if we release that 75.
Okay.
That's what we have.
Okay.
If we keep talking some more, it might grow another couple hundreds.
Let's keep talking. The.
They're checking on POSCon for it.
Yeah, I, I think those two, those two are separate. Those two are separate, Teresa. I'm pretty convinced.
When you say separate, what do you mean?
Well, one is ideology.
And one is POSCon.
One is POSCon, but the POSCon's only $5,000. That, that's not, that's not even close what we, I think we anticipated doing to support the conference.
They got that, but then they also inserted it.
I assume that was, was that the joint marketing, that was a joint marketing, that was a joint marketing of POSCon, ideology, and, and, I mean, POSCon, the VergeSE, Indy Grids.
You're saying that was always, that it was additional?
It was always, that was always there. This is additional, which I think is, again, important, and we continue doing it.
I guess just to clarify to you, Mr. Devine, what you were saying, so it's not assumption it's kind of growing, the $25,000 takes into account that there is a $75,000 allocation. If that allocation is released, then that then becomes available to 100,000.
All right, so, but that also.
You're taking away.
But also, but also separate, apart from that 100, we meet the allegations of all the yellow shirts as well, right? Throughout?
No.
No?
There's no money for, for yellow shirts on the spreadsheets at all.
No, definitely.
No. The 225 for CCP is on there, but there's still 75 short. And the 225 for Vista is not covered on here at all. That's.
All right. All right.
Were those allocations filed? Because we've been talking about this for a while.
All right, so Missy, you know, we're going to rewind back, back to $800,000. So help me understand how we got to where we are from where we were.
We ended 1415.
Eight hundred and fourteen.
With 841,000.
841,000.
Right. In the 1516 budget, we used another 240,000 of that allocation.
Towards?
Towards the 1516, the current year budget, to balance the current year budget. You have since allocated another 20,000. Drop sheet of 580. Do you want me to get through all the math, or you just want me to get to where we are?
The large, the large allocations. Of course, we got, we have the historic, we have Historic Columbia.
Right. And then, right, and then the approved carryforwards, those folks that had funds remaining from 1415.
How much is that?
184,000.
So in, so in that.
600, you take out the 184.
Okay. That, that much in the approved carryforwards?
Yes, sir.
Have we approved them already?
As everyone requested.
One additional one was requested. Those are the ones that requested. And then, as you know, there was a, it's the one-year automatic carryforward if they are requested timely.
When is the timeliness of that?
May 31st.
Yeah, it has to begin by May 30 after requesting carry your funds forward. Otherwise, you forfeit those funds.
That was a resolution passed by council several years ago, right? That groups can have up to one year to use those funds.
Who are, can you go through the carryforwards quickly? Just stay.
Yeah.
Well, you don't let people know they didn't request it.
Well, a big part of that.
It's relevant.
A big part of that, the carryforwards, a big part of that is the Vista. They carried forward, what, 105? 105, only because they were worried about the gap that we're in right now from July 1 to now, paying for expenses, yellow shirts being one of them. A cushion, yeah. Mr. Burt's words, cushion.
Don't use that word.
So they have some money for yellow shirts.
It's a nice cushion, Mr. Burt.
They do. They have some money for yellow shirts.
Otherwise, we'd have to give notice to yellow shirts way in advance that we don't have the funding. So that balance, if we can keep that revolving balance. Yeah. And this, this might be important to you all. Mayor, I heard you ask about the SIAC. Benedict College was doing SIAC, and they requested to carry forward the 20,000 from last year, and they did. So they will have 20,000 moving into this. Wayley Street Neighborhood for a project, they're doing Wayley Street, carry forward 10,000. Palmetto AIDS Life Support, carry forward 1,0026. Vista Guild, carry forward 1,0023. Palmetto, Patrons and Friends of the Arts Center at Ebenezer Lutheran Church, carry forward 2,400. Five Point, the Blues Festival in Five Points, because it was canceled, carry forward their entire 225. The Italian Festival, they had a little bit of money left over, 2,100, they asked to carry that forward. Eau Claire Community Council, because of their event delay last year, carry forward 20,795. That's the carry.
What was the Vista number?
105.
105.
223. Now, I didn't tell you the, I rounded off on some of those, so you may not come up with exactly. But the carryforward was 184. Now, what we closed was 32,979, that we closed, that people actually lost the dollars.
And the additional.
And, and the additional amount that you all allocated last meeting, which was 20,000.
So is that why the 184 comes off of the 600,000?
Right.
Yes, ma'am.
Because it's carryforward. Because it's still part of fund balance, since it wasn't used last year.
Gotcha. And what was the 24?
The 20 was for the 2015 Year of the SHAG event coming up later that weekend. No, the carryforward didn't change. No, that was the only thing. That's all they allocated. No. Well, they, they allocated it, it's my understanding, out of carryforward money. But it's going to be fund balance regardless. It should decrease that. No, it doesn't have anything to do with carryforward. I'm sorry. It's what's closed. Carryforward has nothing to do with the SHAG.
It didn't do anything. So am I understanding that the Vista, that the Vista actually has been 105,000 to fund the yellow shirts?
We do, but let me explain that because of the way the funding is not, you know, if we had a multi-year funding level, we wouldn't have to worry about the carryover. But we would probably have to give notice to the yellow shirts in April, so that they could find other jobs, because we wouldn't know if we have funding for the next year. So that balance is, is only to be used for yellow shirts. We've reserved it for yellow shirts. But it's so that we can get through the next budget year and know how the funds are going to be allocated. Does that make sense? It was kind of to fill the gap between July 1 and now.
So there's still one.
So they still want the 225. You're trying to wonder. It's still the 225.
That's because we don't fund in June, so they know what funding they have July 1.
And the, and the yellow shirt request is how much?
225.
225. Yeah, otherwise, they wouldn't be able to pay the guys starting July 1 if they didn't have the cushion. Which was developed, that was developed by Matt, if you have any questions on that.
So what's that?
Yeah, from Adam.
They're always carrying a mission. Is, is there, is there a reason that we don't do this in May and June?
I would love to do it in May and June. If I could get you, you eight people to agree to do that.
We've talked about it.
I would love to do it in May or June, as we could be ready July 1.
So it's us.
Everybody knows their budget.
It's because we're in the midst of the budget.
Committee meets like a march.
I think we're closer than, I think we're closer to getting this done than we think we are.
It hasn't happened.
That's what, that's what I'm saying. Y'all have it up. It's.
It's just us.
It's council. Y'all have it. The committee meets and the recommendations are usually ready. It's just because we are focusing so much on the budget itself, that this is, you know, this goes on down.
It gets lost in the prior.
What else? No mention of opera. Any other things on this, on this list? I do want to make some recommendations to amend this list before, before we approve it, I will tell you that.
Would you like to get my wish list, Mr. Mayor?
No, I do not want your wish list, Mr. Mayor.
I do want to be real clear on one, one item while you all are looking over things. I do want to be real clear, because several people have called to me about our funding of City Center Partnership. We only fund the yellow shirts for City Center Partnership. We do not fund them, since they are a bid. We do not fund them from hospitality tax for any other activities except the yellow shirts. So it's not, I've had several calls from people that are confused about that. They think we fund them for all kinds of things, and we do not. It's through hospitality tax, it's only for their yellow shirts.
Do we fund all the yellow shirts, or a portion?
No.
We don't, and we don't fund all of them either.
We spend about 600,000.
Yeah, yeah, I know, that's important to note.
It's a fraction.
What, you mentioned the book festival. So where's that accounted for?
South Carolina Humanities Council.
Okay. And so look at the. 78? Okay. And one Columbia was stepping this fiscal agent there?
Yes, sir. That's, that's my understanding rightly, yes. And there may be some others that switch fiscal agency. That's why I was asking for you to fund the event, or not the entity, the organization.
Yes, ma'am. Yes, ma'am. Yes, ma'am. Mickey, you have any thoughts regarding Black Expo? And you, you want to come back and revisit that, or what?
I mean.
What number is that?
Number 10. Yes, I, I mean, I do want to come back and revisit it. I mean, the committee has given them what the committee gave them last year. So what they got outside of that was for this council to do. And I, I think this council needs to look at that again in order to continue to grow that event and, and actually get ready for the 20th year. We need to be planning for, for that.
Need some recommendations on how to meet the yellow shirt needs in the Vista. I mean, I have some thoughts on, on, on the city center, but we got to figure out how to get there. Can you guys give, give us some guidance there? Any thoughts or recommendations or something?
Are you asking me?
Oh, yeah, I'm looking at you, yeah.
Yeah, I know, I see that.
Both of you.
I'm getting nervous. Missy, you got any thoughts on that? I'm just an advocate for the yellow shirts, because I hear things every day.
Absolutely. It's a winner, it's a winner all around.
About the yellow shirts, either on Main Street or in the Vista. And I'm just an advocate for the yellow shirts anyway we can do this.
Can we deflect that question to Richard?
Well, one, one possible solution would be that if we could get a multi-year funding, kind of just a, an okay thumbs up from y'all, then that 105,000 isn't necessary. We're using the 105 now, because that's the only money that we have to pay for yellow shirt service. But if we can have some kind of look ahead transparency on funding, 105 can go away. Is that at the 225 level?
Yes. And I would recommend that as we go into next year, that we do that for some of these, because it's really hard for them to plan.
It's hard.
And it's essential for us. And if we think about where we were, especially in the Vista before the yellow shirts, with law enforcement hours, there is a huge benefit. So we've got to figure that out. So I think next year, we do need to do multi-year commitment, just like some of these have just come off the top, then we don't have to have this discussion. I guess my other thing is, and Richard has been very, he's talked to me a lot about the, the yellow shirts. And I know that we had already committed that we were going to continue the, the yellow shirts. And so they've been banking on that. I think part of this is, and that's why they didn't actually put in an application for the yellow shirts, but they did the application for the Vista Guild. So, but part of this, I think, somewhat, has been somewhat confusing and misleading, was that fund balance of 600. But then, once it rolled over, all of these things that came off the top. And then, as, as usual, some of the mid-year fundings that we do, so that's 600, although some of us might have looked at it and thought we had that money to do yellow shirts and some other big ticket items, that money is not there, because it is, is committed going forward.
And funding still is annual allocations based upon availability, and it's supposed to be annually allocated.
Right. And I understand that, but we can still, just like we, we do with the museum and others.
You anticipate it off the top.
Yeah, they, they have, they know what they're, at least their basis they can plan for, and it comes right off the top before we get into anything else.
We can start talking. Got some thoughts, but it still leaves some gaps in some areas we identified as priorities, like the Black Expo and POSCon and the others. And still got to figure out how we deal with the Vista yellow shirts in a perpetual format, in a forward-looking format. But, I mean, how much, how much time we have today, or, several of these decisions are, several of these organizations are waiting on us to make some decisions today. So with some minor edits that don't affect much of, maybe all, but maybe, maybe three items on this list, I have a couple of recommendations, and we can come back and revisit the others whenever you guys are, are, are okay, are ready to do so. On chat, on chat, I'm going to move that we, that I will send a letter articulating to Renaissance Foundation that we are in full support of their, of their project. And when, when the, the plan for how we move forward in financing comes back, revisit and, and support their efforts moving forward. But right now. But right now, the plan to secure private financing is not in place, so we'll, so we'll deal with this as of today. I'd like to see that 75,000 go to the Eau Claire Community Council and the North Columbia Business Association, 35,000 and 40,000 respectively.
35 to the council?
Eau Claire Community Council, and 40,000 to the North Columbia Business Association. Also, move, and you guys know that Our Story Matters is my, is my baby, and we're going to continue supporting that. We're going to continue moving forward, but I would support moving 75,000 from that to the City Center Partnership.
From where? I'm sorry, I didn't hear.
Number 51.
Historic Columbia to CCP. We're supporting Historic Columbia, obviously, in significant numbers, including the Jewish Festival this year. But moving 75,000 to CCP in that
From, from 51, line 51?
From
From line 51, yes, ma'am.
The, those are just a couple of motions. I think we still got to get arms around, I mean, obviously, got some number of different interests represented here, and getting text messages as we, as we speak. But I think POSCon, of course, the Black Expo, I believe we can still go to Pemena Classic, another, several of you have asked about the International Festival. And I really want us to get our arms around how, not, not if, how we pay for the Vista yellow shirts moving forward. And as, as you can tell, I, I continue to think that we, we have additional resources available, but staff tells me that's not the case.
We do not.
Yes, ma'am. All right. But, well, then, then we're dealing with the age-old reality. If we want to add somewhere, we got to cut somewhere. Now, we still have, with those amendments, we still have 25,000. What was the additional 75,000 dollars, where'd that come from?
Renaissance Foundation.
Okay, so we allocated that, so it's 25,000 left, if that's correct. And the 75,000 that we set aside last year has been rolled in the fund balance already.
I'm sorry, what was that?
75,000 we set aside last year has been rolled in the fund balance and we allocated.
It's, right, we're anticipating that was being allocated, so yeah, so it would have been. Now, it's not part of the 184, it's an actual allocation of 75, so.
But it isn't.
But it's part of the, no, it's
So where'd the 25,000 come from?
It was already in the fund balance.
It's already there.
25 is the anticipated fund balance.
Yeah, it's right there.
And if the 25, the 75 for Renaissance is held, then that would make it 100.
The, unless you guys have some other ways to address some of the other concerns, which are good and strong, without being my recommendation right now.
So, ma'am, where did the 25 go?
It's still there, it's still there.
It's still there. I was going to say, well, if it's still there, I would, I would suggest adding that 12.5 to the Opera and 12.5 to Black Expo.
Can we do 15 of that? We'll give it more when we get more. I mean, that's still 5, 4,000 less than that. 15 to Opera, 10 for Black Expo.
12.5.
I'll take it.
So those amendments.
And just so we, just so we know, when we're saying 25,000, that's what we anticipate to end this year with. 25, 15, 16.
June.
Of next year, yeah.
But it's in this budget, it's money that's coming in this year.
Right.
But has not been budgeted. So, in essence, what you do is you, or it hasn't been allocated.
Right, it's assuming, it's assuming that we hit revenues exactly budgeted, and we hit expenditures exactly budgeted.
Right.
Revenues are, we've
It's budgeting, it's budgeting the allocation.
Now, we're a little bit more aggressive this year, but not as aggressive as we have been in collections.
That's correct.
I'm fine with it, I'll second that.
So that was 12 and a half thousand to the Opera, 12 and a half thousand to Black Expo?
Yep.
When, when do we do the, a quarterly or midterm check on receipts?
The quarterly check?
Midterm possibilities for allocations?
I don't, we don't, we have not had that in the past.
We don't have that.
Now, in past, like last year, when you all saw that there was some extra money, you allocated some extra money to groups, and then you allocated some extra money to the committee to consider all the applications. But as far as anything being planned for this year, there is nothing that I know of.
At, at what point would we do that?
When the audit is done.
Normally, it's been done when you've had a fund balance to do that with. Doing this, you've wiped out all of that fund balance. This allocates all that fund.
I guess I'm asking that we, we kind of be prepared to do that. We did it last year, because we took a look at what was coming in, and so we provided some dollars to the committee, and the council sat around and we did what we're doing now. I'd, I'd like to take another look at, at that, and a second look at what we've done this, this afternoon with a couple of these organizations.
And you can always look at, I think what they're saying is there's probably no, no other money. But Jan, when she gives us our monthly, she does H-tax and A-tax, and so we can see how revenues are happening, and if we're on target, if they're coming in significantly greater after a couple months, we, you know, we, we could do that. But I think what they're saying is, I don't want to put them on the spot, I think what they're saying is, pretty much right now, is everything is allocated
This is anticipated.
Because remember a few years ago, we actually used to set aside a reserve
Right.
because we weren't sure that people would be eating out as much, et cetera, and we're not doing that. This is spending everything that we have. But I agree with you, there's, we, there's some, we need to look at.
Right, we monitor the collections monthly.
And Jan, how, is it two, usually two months?
Yes.
Yeah.
Scrape it about, take a look. So
I amend the motion.
Yes.
His motion was that we're releasing, releasing the 75 from Renaissance, and releasing 75 from Historic Columbia, Our Story Matters. So out of that 150, 35,000 goes to Eau Claire Community Council, 45,000 to NCBA.
Forty, forty.
Forty, sorry, okay. Forty goes to NCBA, and 75 goes to City Center Partnership. And then, from that 25 fund balance, 12.5 goes to Black Expo, and 12.5 goes to Opera.
So 45, 40, 75, 12.5, 12.5.
Yep. And that, that's, that's the motion on the floor. I will say this, though, I mean, and this is not meant to give priority to any of the, of the additional requests, we got to get arms around yellow shirt Vista funding. I mean, that, that, that kind of stands out to me as, as the, as the, as the big one that we got.
He said 35 and 40.
Richard, what's, what's the annual, I should ask Matt, I'm sorry. What's, what's the annual Vista yellow shirt budget?
It's 225,000.
225, that's the annual?
That's the exact cost.
Okay.
We need to double check that.
225.
As you know, we don't have a separate yellow shirt program.
What's your number, Matt?
So we share management.
I know, which is smart.
You do 40, 40, it's 25, too much.
How much, that's not 40, 40, it's 35.
35.
35 for Eau Claire.
Yeah, 35, 35, 40, 75, 12.5, 12.5.
35.
Yeah, 35 for Eau Claire, 40 for NCBA.
It says in the back.
12.5 for
Yeah, this was scheduled this morning.
And then 75 is from H-Tax.
All right, that's amended motion on the floor. Any further discussion?
We'll take number, Mr. Mayor, can we take number 80 by itself, please? Go ahead on everything, pull out number 80 and take it along.
Mr. Runyon has asked to move number 80. SC Pride. Any objection to that? All right, we'll take, we'll take number 80 first. Those in favor of the allegation?
Second.
Move the second discussion with the previous question, clerk call the roll.
Mr. Mayor, I think there may be one or two folks here that would like to speak on that one, that represent
We're not taking, we're not taking a comment on it. With the previous question, clerk call the roll.
Mr. Val.
Hi.
Mr. Runyon?
No.
Mr. Newman?
Hi.
Ms. Wild?
Hi.
Mr. Vine?
Hi.
Mr. Davis?
Hi.
Mayor Benjamin?
Hi.
Mr. Val?
Hi.
Mr. Vine?
Hi.
Ms. Wild?
Hi.
Mr. Vine?
Hi.
Mr. Davis?
Hi.
Hi.
Mr. Val?
Hi.
Mr. Vine?
Hi.
Mr. Davis?
Hi.
Ms. Wild?
Hi.
Mr. Vine?
Hi.
Mr. Davis?
Hi.
Ms. Wild?
Hi.
Mr. Vine?
Hi.
Ms. Wild?
Hi.
Mr. Vine?
Hi.
Mr. Davis?
Hi.
Ms. Wild?
Hi.
Mr. Vine?
Hi.
Mr. Val?
Hi.
Mr. Davis?
Hi.
Ms. Wild?
Hi.
Mr. Vine?
Hi.
Mr. Val?
Hi.
Ms. Wild?
Hi.
Mr. Vine?
Hi.
Mr. Val?
Hi.
Ms. Wild?
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 Hi.[1484.41]
You, we believe, believe in the reinvestment of the H-Tax dollar, but it's not a gift to these organizations. And last year, in giving our committee an additional $400,000 plus, that we were able to help new organizations and smaller organizations. Just as Sam brought up, when you reviewed the dollars that were coming in, you gave the committee in March, I believe it was, an extra $50,000 just to revisit those smaller organizations, and it really does make a difference. And we as a committee appreciate it because we know so many other communities in this state look at that H-Tax dollar and spend it on roads and sewers and whatever else might be in their vision at the time, but you reinvested directly into the community organizations, the arts, culture, and community enrichment groups that are helping to replenish that H-Tax fund, and we as a committee want to say thank you to you as a council.
Appreciate it. Thank y'all. Okay, that ends it.
Speaker.
Speaker.
Couple folks here to speak, Mark Hendrick, South Carolina Baptist Association, and Mike Gonzalez from South Carolina Baptist Alliance.
Okay.
Well, thank you all for giving me the opportunity to speak. I, I realize I may be coming late to the party here, but I'm a citizen of District Three, live on Glenwood Road, Councilman Medora. And as Councilman Runyon said professionally, I work with the South Carolina Baptist Convention, so I've got a pretty good feel on the faith-based community here in Columbia. Want to speak to item number eighty, the funds that are being allocated to the SC Pride Day. As a citizen of faith, I can't in good conscience, conscience, and oddly buy why you all allocate this money to fund things like drag queen performances and things like that. As a taxpayer, you know, in good conscience, I just don't think that's a good allocation of, of revenue. You know, I'm a citizen, I go to restaurants, I shop, I put people up in hotels here, so it's very offensive to me and my family. Let me be clear, because I know there's members of the media here. I welcome these people to come to Columbia and exercise their First Amendment rights. Glad that they're going to be here. I go to church three blocks from here, at a pretty large church, and I hope that on October 25th, on Sunday, they'll all come join. But again, allocating this money is very offensive to me and my family, and I would just ask you to reconsider.
Thanks.
Thank you.
My name's Mike Gonzalez, I'm a local pastor here at Columbia World Outreach Church, multicultural church, fifty percent African-American, thirty-five percent Hispanic and white as well. I'm also speaking on the same issue. Also, the executive director for the South Carolina Pastors Alliance with over five hundred churches across the state. And the issue that Mark just mentioned about, we are very offended at the very fact that you would allocate any money towards a gay pride, you know, like March or anything like that. And this is my first time here at city council, but obviously will not be my last. We really appreciate your work here, you know, in the city, but at the same time, we need to be very clear that we oppose, you know, any of the taxpayer, you know, any kind of money that we're putting forth and the things that we buy, the things that we purchase to go to these kind of groups. And we are working very diligently to be able to get this information out. It seems a lot of times, you know, that the population at large does not know exactly what's going on here at city council, but we just want to be very clear that we are opposed to any taxpayer money going to any of these states. And we will definitely communicate this to all the churches across the state, as well as the churches here, I mean, in our city. And I just wanted to go on record with that. I appreciate your time.
Thank you. Madam. This is city manager?
Yes, sir.
Let's move forth with the agenda, please.
Okay, item three, Veterans Employment Initiative. Ms. Pamela Benjamin, our Director of Human Resources. We got so many, we got so many copies.
Thank you.
Kind of hard to lead when you're.
Yeah, I'd have that.
Mr. Benjamin?
Thank you, Ms. Benjamin, you can get started, it's a little loud.
You are quite welcome. Good afternoon, everyone. You can't hear me?
Yeah.
Can you hear me now? Okay. Well, I was asked to come today to talk about the city's Veteran Employment Initiative. And so it's always exciting to talk about employment and opportunities that we as a city provide to our citizens. As you all know, our veteran population represents a prime population for talent. They bring a wealth of knowledge to us as a city and to us as HR professionals. We're certainly wanting to tap into any populations that will provide us with the talent we need to fill the vacancies that we have. So it goes without saying that there are a lot of good reasons to hire veterans, and these are ten that were listed on the Department of Labor's website, but some of them I'd like to point out just for us as a government entity is strong leadership qualities, ability to work effectively and diligently in a fast-paced environment, respect for procedures and accountability, strong personal integrity, and a strong sense of health, safety, and property standards. And you'll see a lot of veterans gravitate towards government employment, either federal government, state government, or local government. And so we certainly want to be an attractive entity to those individuals who are looking for those types of transitions from their military experience to working with us in the public sector. And you, you can see the other reasons up there, and they are pretty self-explanatory. Our initiative really, the strategy is really focused around recruitment and selection, building partnerships, and then, once we're hired them, making sure we are retaining and supporting those individuals that we are able to recruit. So in terms of our recruitment efforts, the city does a lot to try and recruit our veteran population. Currently, just to look at the numbers, the city has veteran representation in every single department throughout the city. We have over two hundred veterans, which represents around ten percent of our population, and CPD and, and the Fire Department really have the largest populations of veteran employees. And that goes without saying, they, they do have a lot of those qualities that, that CPD and, and CFD are looking for. So some of the ways we reach out to the veteran population to try and recruit them is through city-sponsored career fairs that we put on ourselves. We had one, the Police Department had one recently, and they reach out to Fort Jackson and some other organizations to invite veterans to attend those career fairs. We also have military career fairs that we're invited to go to at Fort Jackson. We went to one of theirs that they had recently, pretty large one, and I've gone to every one since I've been here for the last four years. And it's a great opportunity for people to, to know we have positions available for veterans and to really help them understand how to apply for our jobs and transition to the workforce, so it's a good opportunity for us. One thing that I'm really excited about that we do are targeted career fairs. Wish Terry was here, Terry Hooper works in my office, and she does a lot of work with our veteran partners, and she actually goes out to individual locations, for example, the Dorn Medical Center, to do information sessions and have targeted career fairs for their employee, for their veterans that are there. So this is a flyer that was distributed by the Dorn Medical Center, by their, their HCHV Community Employment Coordinator, because as you are aware, there are lots of entities out there who are trying to provide assistance to our veterans. So this is one of the flyers, and Terry actually goes to those organizations and highlights some of the positions that we have available, and then talks to the actual people who are interested about how to apply, what to put on your application, what skills, what, what kind of education we're looking for. So that gives them an opportunity to interact with her on a one-to-one basis, so that she can make sure that we're talking the same language when we're looking at positions that they're applying for. So that's one that we do quite often. She goes and she's available to them on a regular basis. So career fairs and actual partnerships, which I'll talk about in a second, are really the way we reach out to our veterans. As far as some of our other recruitment and selection efforts, what we've done, and we've had it for about three years now, is we stamp each of our applications with Hire a Vet. That way, it's very recognizable when the departments receive those applications, that they know the person is a veteran. So automatically, when they get their stack of applications, they see that on the front. So.
Is that new, Pam?
We've had it for about three years, since I've been here. So.
Couple of just quick questions.
So that's one thing that we really, we started doing as a result of some of the, the, I think we had a presentation from some of the veterans groups who wanted us to be able to distinguish or highlight those applicants, and so we were able to do that, and that's been real helpful. We also do, try to do a very good job of equating comparable experience. Sometimes, the veteran has only military experience, so we make sure that we consider that a person has driven a tank in the military with, maybe they, they could be a truck driver with us. So we try to make those comparable, those comparisons to comparable military training, and that's really helpful to the veteran, because a lot of times, people will overlook those experiences as if they're not as equivalent to civilian experience, so we make sure we do that. And then one thing that we're real successful at is to have alternatives to full-time employment, such as work experiences, internships, and apprenticeships. And we have been very successful with a program that we have called the Non-Paid, I gotta get the exact title, the Non-Paid Work Experience Program. We have placed fourteen veterans in the last three years in different departments, and what happens with those programs is the military pays them while they gain work experience working for us. It is a perfect situation where we see whether that person's going to be a good fit with us, they get the opportunity to see if it's a job or an environment they want to work in, and once they finish the program, we have an opportunity to hire that particular person if we'd like to, and we've made several successful hires out of that program. We also are very big on internships, and we have a, a fine example of an intern that Missy's using this year, which I've had the pleasure of working with, and that's John Crampton, and John's sitting over here in the audience, and John is, and I have to read some of this, because it's pretty impressive. He's a Bronze Star Medal winner. He is currently at the University of South Carolina, getting his Master's in Public Administration. He's a West Point graduate, he was a tank commander, and he is.
Now you're showing off, he's a.
I know, right? And he does great work, it, it just is very impressive. John's working through the Army Civil Education Program, and they pay for him to go to school and, and pay for him to, to be able to work with Missy, so that the city doesn't pay anything, but we have the opportunity to take advantage of his skills and give him an opportunity to see what it's like to work in, in government. And I know he's gotten lots of good experience from working with us, and hopefully, when he finishes army career, he'll find a city, ours hopefully, or some other city where he can show his talents and gifts. So we, we are very excited about those types of programs, but we do that often. We often have interns that do those types of programs, or the non-paid program, or just internships that, that are there for shorter periods of time, where we give those people, those veterans, an opportunity to get some exposure to what we do in city government to see if it's something that they're interested in doing. So those are very exciting things for us. As you all know, we have lots of wonderful partnerships that the city works with different entities. We have a great relationship with Veterans Administration, the Veterans Administration Dorm, Dorm Medical Center. You all saw a presentation by Dee Al Britton a couple months ago, a couple council meetings ago. Of course, we support her, me, myself, and some of my staff have gone to Fast Forward to do work sessions, to do educational sessions, to assist her group, her population of veterans, to transition into the workforce. And I know that we, the city supports the Operation Employment Education for homeless or at-risk homeless veterans also. And so through funding and through other support, we support those partnerships with those outside organizations. So those partnerships really help us identify good candidates, give us an opportunity to make sure that they know that we're available as a employer and that we have lots of opportunities for them. The other thing that we work on is when we actually are able to recruit those veterans that we retain them, and we do that through promoting a culture of inclusion, and that's in terms of making sure that we are giving them all the benefits that are available to, to them. As you might imagine, military families sometimes have different challenges than other families. They have people who have recently transitioned into the city, or they have either spouses or other family members who are in the military, so we make sure that we are providing them with FMLA, Military Caregiver Leave, if that's what they need, or that we are making contact with other supporting agencies that provide other services to the military and their family. So we make sure that we share that information with them and provide that support that they need, because, let's face it, they're more successful if their families transition easier and quicker, so we often are, you know, providing them with that type of information. There are lots of resources out there for veterans. Sometimes it's a little overwhelming and they don't know quite where to go, so we do encourage them to contact veteran services organizations and to find out what resources are out there and available to them. We also make sure, like I said before, they're aware of their FMLA rights, and we try to make sure our supervisors are aware of their USARA rights, their employment and reemployment. If we have reserve members, we try to make sure that we are protecting their rights when they return to the workforce, and try to make sure we're flexible with them when they have to go to their reserve duty or when they return. So those are the, some of the things that we, that we are making sure that departments know about whenever we get information about whether a military or, or veteran is going to be out for any period of time. So those really are the, the efforts that we make in order to try and recruit, retain, and support our veterans, and that's really what our initiative consists of. Does anybody have any questions?
I'm sorry, please, Mr. Mayor.
Well, I was just wondering, Pam, I mean, do we have actually any numbers, though? How many veterans have we hired in the last year?
We have, and, and that's a really good question. What we've just started doing was starting to identify those veterans in our database. Previously, we did not make a specific, even though we were stamping the applications, we didn't retain that information to know the numbers, so we just started doing that. We're looking at an automated application system, and we're going to make sure that that's included also in, in our ways of tracking those veterans. Like I said, I can tell you that we did have fourteen that were placed through the nonprofit, non, non-pay program. I know that for sure, but the actual number that we recruited, I don't have that, that specific number.
Have we placed anybody through the Fast Forward program?
We have placed one person, but we haven't placed any recently.
I've gone by Fast Forward a couple of times, and I, I have an appreciation for what they're trying to do with the veterans on a daily basis with computer skills training and that sort of thing.
And there's really a spectrum of population, you know, there are some that are going to be good fits for us, there's some that are going to be good fits for other organizations, so we really, you know, there, there are lots of veterans out there who need assistance, and there's a spectrum.
That, right now, our numbers overall are high, we just don't know what they are. But I would, for the, for the city, I, I would suspect that they're pretty high.
Yeah, we, we've got, we've got around two hundred veterans that I know of, I just don't know whether, you know, they came within the last couple of years.
Yeah, but you have, you do have some folks who come into the system and they don't make that.
They don't make it a, a, a big deal about that, mhm.
Pamela.
Yes, sir.
I have over two hundred email addresses for veterans. Is this on the website?
Is the presentation?
At the website, this information?
We can put it on there, we'll attach it to the, the.
I would like to send it out.
Sure.
And I have connections at Fort Jackson, and I would contact them to make sure.
Sure, we'd love that. I mean, we're, we're all about trying to reach out and get those qualified candidates to apply for our jobs, so we're, we're, we're reaching out to anyone who's, who's qualified, who's interested, we certainly want to do that, so we'll make sure, Erica can attach it to the.
It would, it would be, it would be great to have a census of, of how many of our two thousand plus employees are veterans, I think it'd be helpful.
Two hundred.
How many, two hundred? So ten percent.
The ten percent.
And then, really, I, I know obviously it's tough dealing with employing our homeless citizens with working as closely with Fast Forward as you can to really get that process humming a lot better. I received some information today, just today, from the mayor of Beaufort, Kaiseling, on a new program, program they're working on down there too, and I'll, I'll share that broadly, but they're asking for everybody to get, all the mayors and military communities to have the cities work together on, on some veterans efforts, so I'll share that broadly with my council. I think it seems to be a pretty good program to have working out there.
Yeah.
It's not, it's not, and it's not just focused on, on the city, it's focused on the entire community.
The entire community. And there are a lot of different organizations out there, you know, Fast Forward, some other organizations that are reaching out to that population, so we certainly want to support it any way we can, we'd be glad to hear about that.
There's a particular vendor that we're in some discussions with now, and I know probably several do this, the large vendors, that they, when they go to deploy, and this is regarding AMR, so I'll just say that, not the vendor, but they would work with us if you want to, for example, because a lot of times with that particular type of, when they get ready to actually do the work, they just need temporary employees, oftentimes are people who are capable, are able to be flexible and move around and go from city to city, so I had talked with them about veterans being able, that we target veterans to do some of that work if we ever, you know, proceed with any type of work with them, and they said they could, but I think there's lots of opportunities like that out there too, with some of our larger companies that we work with all the time.
Does anybody have any other questions? Well, we're, we're, you know, we're always anxious to identify a population of employees that can provide us with some good, sound candidates, and veterans are, are ideal for the type of work that we do, and so we certainly want to let them know that we're a welcoming employer and that we're, we're eager to have them join our force, our workforce.
Thank you, Pam.
Thanks, Pam.
You're welcome.
I think Mr. Jako's outside the door.
Why's the door closed, by the way? It'll get loud up there.
It was loud, it's not anymore, I think all of the folks have left.
It's safe.
It's safe.
The next item is the Clean Water 2020 Program Update. Um, Mr. Jacob, Director of Utilities and Engineer. And members of our team, I think, are here with him from CDM. We actually moved this off of your evening agenda because I felt that it was better placed here, but then also you've got some agenda items that are on the... Actually doing pretty well today.
Doing great.
Don't jinx it.
I was about to say, don't somebody.
I'm sorry.
As soon as you say it, it turns.
I'm still, I'm watching. I think you're all...
The power will go out.
See what Joey does. See what he's trained.
Joey knows to work swiftly.
All right, thank y'all for letting us come provide an update today. Brian and Jerry are here with me from the Clean Water Program. Um, today, we're going to provide an update.
On the side, it should be, is that on and off?
Yeah, it's on. It's your magic. I bet I, I wonder if I unplugged the... I'm sorry. Try plugging that button.
Why don't you hit that area right there and see if that's next?
Yeah, it's going to take a minute to, wait.
There you go.
And then, yeah.
Okay. Um, today, we're going to provide an update of where we are with the program, um, with our status of our deliverables, and, um, where, where, what deliverables are coming up. Uh, we're going to provide you one-page summaries like we have done in the past of, of the upcoming deliverables, and, uh, also talk about, uh, some milestones we've, we've reached in the program and what are some of our upcoming goals. So, uh, as far as the status, now, this is probably a similar slide. This is the slide that we typically show, um, with all the programs, uh, and where we are to date with each program. Uh, what is listed at the top, the sewer mapping, it's, I don't know if it's showing up in gray, but basically, these top programs here, uh, the sewer mapping, uh, the capacity assurance program, the maintenance management system, satellite sewer system agreement, um, transmission system, operation and maintenance program, as well as the continuing sewer assessment program, all of which have, everything has acronyms. So I'll, I'll try not to use the acronym, but I may. Um, all of those have been submitted to EPA. The sewer mapping program is the only program, well, the sewer mapping program, the, the cap list actually doesn't require an approval. Um, it's just required that we keep that. But the sewer mapping program is the only program that we've actually got an okay from EPA on. All the others, um, are still under review, uh, with EPA currently. And just because we've submitted the programs, all of these, these, all of these programs are basically us telling EPA, this is how we're going to handle things. So the sewer mapping program is an example. We, us laying out a plan, standard operating procedures on how we're going to map our assets, how we're going to collect the data, how all that data's going to be put into our GIS, and how we do it from the time we submit it and they approve it forward. So just because we've submitted, and it's, it's not just them checking the box that we've done it, we actually have to basically implement and do what we say we, we're going to do. And that's, that's important. Um, just wanted to make sure we all realize that just because we submit it doesn't mean we're, we're finished. So with all, and that's, that's true with all the programs. But the programs shown in green here, um, you can see what we've submitted to date. We have just as many submittals due this November. So we, we've submitted six programs, and this doesn't include the quarterly reports and annual reports that we also have to submit. Um, but these, we've got six programs that are actually due in November of this year, and that's what we're going to talk about today, is, is those six programs. And then beyond that, we have additional programs that are, um, actually due some next year and further on down the road. But the ones due this November, they're actually the programs that are due, that are called out to be due eighteen months beyond the signing, so eighteen months beyond May of fourteen. So Brian, why don't you go ahead and hand out all the one-page summaries? So while Brian's handing that out, um, we, we're, one thing we want to point out is, is one of the successes is we are, everything's been submitted on time, so we are a hundred percent on schedule with our, with the consent. And, uh, what Brian's handing out is the, the, what, just a one-page summary of the programs that are due this November, with the exception of the financial analysis program, which we're going to come back in October to present that. We're not ready at this point to present that. And if you, um, if anyone would like additional information, um, these are, these are just one-page summaries. Um, what we submit to EPA is a lot more, obviously, than what's provided as a one-page summary. If you would like to see the whole program when we are ready to submit it, um, we, we can provide you that as well. And also, one thing to point out is two of these, and I'll, I'll point out each one of these, two of them are actually required to go to public notice, and I'll, I'll point out which one of those when, when we get there. Uh, the first one is the wastewater treatment plant operations program. This pro, this is basically our SOP to EPA saying how we're going to maintain our equipment to make sure we're in compliance with our MPDS permit. That's, that's the basic, um, gist of the operations program. It's made up of three primary prog, programs. It's the operations plan, uh, the process control plan, and the compliance monitoring plan. And I can go into detail of each or provide more, but I want to keep moving so we can get through the whole presentation. So if you have any questions going along, please, please ask. Uh, the next program is the, what's referred to as the SERP, which is the Contingency and Emergency Response Plan. And basically, this is a program and plan, uh, how we react to disasters or emergencies. And there, there's two type of emergencies that, that are covered in the plan. One, one is a routine emergency. A routine emergency would be an SSO, um, would be a sanitary sewer overflow, but it also could be a line break. It could be, um, uh, an electrical failure at one part of our plant. But basically, it lays out how we react to those type failures. But then you're looking at the catastrophic failures. This is a flood, this is a hurricane, or a tornado, or a widespread power outage. Um, this, this program is, is laid out how we react to, um, those type situations, how we staff it, and, you know, just basically a, a, a response plan to, to address those types of issues. And a lot of these programs, we already have in place, but with the consent order, we have to be more detailed and, um, provide EPA with a, a more detailed, um, operating procedure on how we handle those things. Uh, the next one is the...
Joe.
Yes, ma'am.
Just a question on this one, if you don't mind.
Sure.
Do we do drills?
We do tabletop exercises.
No actual, I, I, I'm referring to them as drills, but...
Yes, sir.
Given some of the, um, uh, activities, I'm not going to use the word mishaps, that has kind of been involved in a lot of this, how do we... I'm trying to literally figure out how we do the testing, do the drills, or is it just conversation or paper?
If it's a, we, we, we do what's referred to as the tabletop exercise. We sit around the table and we talk through a disaster. If we have a, a chemical spill, chlorine spill, um, we, we talk to, you know, that involves the fire department, and it's, it's, it's a long process. Or if we have a power failure, that the whole plant's down. Um, we talk about how we divert flow to the reservoir and our, to our storage to, until we're able to gain power back. And, you know, just the different operation plans should you have that type of disaster. We don't, we don't actually walk through where we actually do everything, but we do have tabletop exercises where we talk through the disaster.
Okay. Thank you.
Uh, the next program is the wastewater collection and transmission system training program. And this is a required program that does not, um, require the public notice. I'm sorry, backing up to the SERP, which is the, um, contingency response plan, I just wanted to point out that this, this program actually does require the public notice. And when we say public notice, is it has to be advertised at, and we, we leave a copy at the, at the library, we advertise it on our website, cleanwater2020.com, and public has thirty days to provide input. To date, uh, the programs that we've had public notice, we've not gotten any, uh, input, so to speak. Um, but it's not uncommon for these type programs to have to be required for a public notice, but every program does not require it. This one, contingency emergency program, is one of the programs that does require it. But a, all the information is on our website, as well as every program that we've, we've, we submit. Everything's accessible through our Clean Water 2020, um, website. Um, the wastewater collection, transmission system, training program, this is the program that we basically, we lay out all of our procedials, procedures for training, um, staff, and providing specific training on the collection system and transmission system outside of our wastewater plant. Within the gates of our wastewater plant, we have a separate program, um, a separate program that we submit to EPA, um, providing the training for that. We do a lot of training in our collection system, we do a lot of training at our metro wastewater treatment plant. So basically, these programs, which we outline, how we train, how we document, how everybody's trained, and we keep all that, uh, in our data management system. Uh, the next program is our information management system, our IMS program. This does not require the, the public, uh, public comment period, but this program is, is basically a guide for our staff to implementing, upgrading enhancements to the existing information system. This is basically telling EPA our standard oper, operating procedure on how we handle, handle our, our data. And improving our data management, we're, we're going through this in our wastewater system, but this will be an improvement to how we handle our data, not just in our, our wastewater, but also how we handle data in our water, and really in utilities and engineering, and ultimately, um, within the city. So it, 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 this is a good program. I mean, we, as you, as we all know, we have a lot of data that we maintain on a day-to-day basis, and EPA wants to know how we're going to maintain that data, and how is that data going to be accessible to, to the city staff, but also to the public. Uh, the next program, it's a lot of programs, uh, is the, what's referred to as the GSOP, and it is the Gravity Sewer System Operation Maintenance Program. This, this program is, it, it, it does require the thirty-day, um, public comment period. And this is the program where we document and provide EPA our standard oper, operating procedure on the operation and maintenance of our gravity system. How we, um, how we handle, you know, a day-to-day operation on resource requirements and our, our key performance indicators, on how, how many feet of pipe that we inspect a year, how many manholes we inspect a year. This is the program that lays all that out, and how we do it, but also how we document. Okay, that, that's a quick run-through of all the programs. Those are all the programs that are due, with the exception of the financial analysis program, which will be coming to you later, um, in, at least by October, um, to present that. Um, those are the, the programs that are due this, um, this November. Um, next, we want to talk about, um, really where we are with the program, um, not just with the submittals, but, uh, some of the benefits from the program to date, and also, um, the next milestones and where, where we're going with the program. This is a, a graphic that the Clean Water Program put together that really kind of lays out some of the achievements, um, that we've, we've made through, since May of, of two thousand fourteen, when we actually went under into the consent agreement. We've had severen, seven, excuse me, um, deliverables, um, that were successful, that are on time, and we've got nine pending deliverables, and that doesn't include some of the routine deliverables, like the quarterly report and the annual report. These are the major deliverables that we have to provide. And the important thing is, is we, we've provided them, we've provided them on time. So we are completely within compliance of our program. Um, we, the fifteen point six-three percent is the reduction at the time that this was put together. Um, it was put together, we were looking at numbers this morning, and that's actually up to about seventeen, over seventeen percent now, a reduction. Last fiscal year, we had a reduction of about seventeen percent, um, compared to the previous fiscal year in SSOs. So the, that's just a percentage of how we've decreased in SSOs, and we've actually decreased in over twenty-one percent in volume in that previous year. So we have, we have some successes in the reduction of our SSOs. Um, we've inspected about a hundred and seventy-eight miles of pipe in the ground, uh, in this first year of the program. We've cleaned about a hundred and sixty-eight miles, and they don't necessarily coincide. We don't always in, we, we don't always clean the pipes we inspect, because some of them don't need it, but we...
Are we set to inspect every mile, or just some?
Under the consent, eventually, we have to get through every, every mile in the system. So we're...
Two thousand, what, how many miles we got?
About eleven hundred.
Eleven hundred?
Not quite eleven hundred. We sold a portion of it. We were close to twelve hundred and before we sold, so I guess it's like...
Fifteen percent, yeah? About fifteen percent?
Yes.
Okay.
So I think we have seven years ultimately to inspect the entire system, so we're on... Uh, we've inspected, uh, one, the first, uh, this previous year, we inspected one thousand eight hundred sixty-six. Uh, we did that many fog inspections, that's our fat soil and grease program. Um, we did that with three folks, so that's, that's a pretty good achievement for, for one year of inspection.
Can we have, do we have that chart, yeah? Do we have that one?
Well, I don't, but I can provide it to you. Yes, sir, we can, we can provide you this.
Okay, thank you.
We've done eight hundred and forty-two, um, work orders that we've closed up to April since May of two thousand fourteen, and we did three thousand and seven, uh, pump station asset, um, inspections. We did, we did our, our, our T-SOP this year, which is the Transmission System Operation and Maintenance Plan. That's a, that's a lot. But that lays out all of our force mains and all of our pump station asset management. So that, that's pretty big on, on how we keep the data, how we inspect it, and, and it's a lot in, involved in it. But that's one of the submittals that we, I think it was due last May, and that EPA still has for approval, but we're moving forward with what we're, say we're going to do, so. But that, we'll provide this graphic. Um, this, this is up to June thirtieth of two thousand fifteen, um, these numbers here. So they, they've changed a little bit, but that just gives an idea of, in, in a graphic form of some of our early successes. Um, some recent milestones, uh, these are all the programs that, that are either, either have been submitted. Um, as I mentioned earlier, the only one that we've gotten response from EPA on is the sewer mapping plan, which it was approved, what we submitted, um, which, we started very early on our mapping plan. Um, we, we... We, city has always maintained a map of their utilities, but we have to have a GIS grade, everything has to be located in the GIS, and then we have to add intelligence to that. So, that's what the sewer mapping plan lays out. We started several years ago on implementing that plan. We've gotten through most of our, our major assets in the mapping plan, but ultimately, we have to have every manhole, every line mapped, so that's, that's what our mapping plan lays out. We're, we've started a while back on that, and we are on task on, on achieving that goal. But these, these list all the programs that we have either submitted, and we're waiting on a response, or will be submitted in this, this year of the program. We'll provide a copy of this presentation. I'm sorry, I didn't bring a copy for everybody today. As I pointed out earlier, everything's been submitted on time. The, the program, we, we're managing about 50 to 60 ongoing wastewater projects right now, so it's a part of the program, which, the Clean Water Program, it, really, the CDM serves, CDM and their partners serve as an extension of staff. So, what they're doing is they're assisting our staff in meeting the goals of the consent order, so, consent decree. And that's basically what CDM's and their, their partner's role is, and that's, that's why we're, we, when we talk about managing these wastewater projects, our staff, I mean, we manage projects, but we're adding a lot of projects to what we're doing. So, having 50 ongoing, 50 or more ongoing wastewater projects, that's part of CDM's role, is to help city staff manage those projects. So, essentially, they're, they're an extension of staff in the management role of these projects. But as a part of the program, as a part of their function, we have to lay out guidelines, SOPs, we have to redo, we have to have standardized ways of processing the information, and that's part of their role, and that's how they're helping us with the many programs and, and as, as a part of their contract. So, that's, that's one of, within saying all that, they've, they've been, we have been very successful in laying out consistency and efficiency in the operation, so we can be successful in the program. And that's one of the reasons that we have been able to get everything supplied to date, but we're, we're standardizing specifications, we're standardizing how we handle contracts and scopes, and there's a lot of things that we're doing as a part of the program that's, it's benefiting us on the wastewater side, but it really benefits us as a whole, because we take these standardized procedures and we, we spread them out. And an example is our, our specifications, we're standardizing all of our specifications as a part of the program, but we're going to be doing it on the water side as well. So, it really rolls to the whole, you know, to benefit the whole, as, as, as far as UNE goes, but ultimately, as far as the city goes. But we're also laying out procedures on how we do asset management, which will roll over into, into our water asset management and other areas as well. This benefits our, our city works, our work order system, because we're having to build these, how we handle assets and work orders on the wastewater side, it will roll over to the water side. So, it's, it's, it's a huge program, and obviously, we're addressing our issues on the wastewater side, but in doing that, we're building, you know, we're improving ourselves on the water side as well. So, I just wanted to point that out as a part of the program, that there are successes even outside of wastewater that we're seeing as a part of the program. We started, wanted to point out, one of the major projects that we've recently bid and that we're starting this year, and it's the, the digester project, and this is the, really the first step in us being able to produce a sustainable product, rather than hauling all of our solids to the landfill, us being able to dry the solids, and be able to produce a sustainable product. So, that project bid earlier this year, and it's really the first step in us, it took us a while to get there, because it's, it was a 20, up to a $25 million project, when you put all the engineering and the construction costs together. So, it was a huge task for us to get, get this project out. It took us a little while to get there, but we did bid it earlier this year, so we're now able to move to the next step of us starting to, to really move on what we can do with our product, and to be able to produce a sustainable product. So, we'll be coming back later this year, and we, we talked about this a while, but I just wanted to point this out, that we did get this project out, and we're ready to move to the next process of possibly looking at an RFP to how we handle our solids, so. Some of our upcoming goals, we've, we've got about 13 submittals, once you put all the programs that I mentioned earlier, and what's, what's coming up this year, and once you add in our annual report, our quarterly reports, we send EPA a lot of information every year, so. As a part of this, this upcoming year, we have about, we estimate about 13 submittals that has to be submitted this year. The dashboards, our website, cleanwater2020.com, we're making updates to our website, where we can have project dashboards, and we've talked about that a while, where we can actually, the public can go on our website and look at a project and see where we are with it. But we're going to have an interactive map as well, where you can actually go, put your address in, what projects are around me, so the public can find out this information. So, this, that, that is coming with this, this year's program. As I mentioned earlier, we're, we're developing standardized specifications, we're working through that as part of this year's program. We've, we're, we've come to a point where we've got our front-end specs, we've got that standardized, we're moving to the technical specs next, and that will be a part of this year's program. The, the program's going to be managing up to 60 projects this year, and we're continuing the improvement of our hydraulic model. It's not a program, it's not one of the programs we have to submit as of right now, but it, the hydraulic model follows the sewer mapping plan. Once you get the mapping plan complete, then you submit them how you're going to do your hydraulic model. But we're, as we do the mapping, we're developing our hydraulic model. So, once we get to that point, we're, we're going to be ready to submit, but the, the main thing is, is we're trying to improve our system today, because the better mapping, the better hydraulics we have, the more intelligent decisions we can make about our system. So, we're making those improvements as we go. So, even, even though the submittal's not due yet, we're, we're making those improvements today, so. Those are just some of the things that, that are coming up in this year's program. I know that's a lot of information quickly, but if y'all have any questions, I'm willing to entertain them.
Questions, Joe?
Thank you.
Thank you, Joe.
Thank you.
Executive session. Agenda. We have executive session, discuss several matters, including discussion of performance of an employee, discussions of negotiations incident to propose contractual arrangements, discussion of received legal advice on matters covered by attorney-client privilege, and discussion of negotiations incident to propose seller property, all matters properly noticed under our freedom of information at law. Is there a motion to go on the executive session?
Seven seconds.
In discussion. Same number with the previous question, the clerk caller, roll.
Mr. Nor, Mr. Littleman, Ms. Powell, Mr. Vanna, Ms. Nigga.
Aye.
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 Aye.